Recording in progress.
Good evening. I want to welcome everybody and call to order the Tuesday, October 21st meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is, as usual, the approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we go any further, did anybody sign up to speak on any of the agenda items? Next, bill's passed by the county council. It's been our practice lately to, for a while, that when the bills are passed unanimously, we just approve them en masse. That's not true. We have a couple that were a five-four decision, so we're going to take each one of them individually and vote on them. So, let's get started. I think there's six of them, so it's not an unmanageable number. The first is Bill Number 70-25, which becomes ordinance 55-25. It's the special solid waste management budget for the coming year. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, 55-25. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Bill Number 71-25. It's ordinance 56 becomes ordinance 56-25. It's the budget for the St. Joseph County, St. Joseph Airport. There's no discussion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Bill 73-25, which becomes ordinance 57-25. It's the budget for the St. Joseph, for St. Joseph County. And this passed the county council with a five-four vote. Comments, questions? Well, if not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Bill Number 74-25, which becomes ordinance 58-25. It's an ordinance establishing the salaries and fixing the numbers of employees for St. Joseph County for next year. Discussion. This is the other one that passed, five-four. Okay. If there are no comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A little different format. There we go. Next, it's Bill Number 80-25, which becomes ordinance 59-25. This ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees for different departments. It passed nine-zero. It was unanimous vote, basically for the prosecutor. Do we have any questions or comments on the prosecutor budget? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, among the bills, we have Bill Number 79-25, which is ordinance 60-25. And this was the transfer and appropriation bill for the sheriff, community corrections, making adjustments throughout. Do we have any questions? This passed nine-zero as well. Any questions or comments on the, this particular ordinance? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, approval of the St. Joseph County internship program.
Good evening. Selena Carr, Human Resources, Director of the County City Building, Seventh Floor. What we have before you this evening is hu, an internship program that the Human Resources Department is wanting to launch. Over the past year, we've had at least three requests from various departments in regards to an internship program. There is an opportunity for the internship program to be paid or unpaid. However, what we are launching is an unpaid internship program with the hopes to provide students and emerging professionals with meaningful work experience, skills, development, and exposure to public service while supporting the mission and goals of St. Joseph County. We're hoping to provide a practical learning opportunity, create a talent pipeline for future recruitment, which means potentially some of those interns could become full-time employees eventually. They, all candidates must be at least 18 years of age. Interns, we're hoping, the goal is that they would be enrolled in college, university, or technical program, or a workforce development program, or be a recent graduate seeking professional experience. Any questions?
Yes. Which departments have had these requests?
IT, emergency management, as well as maintenance. Goodwill approached our maintenance department in regards to a program that they're currently funding. So while some of those folks may be paid, they won't be paid by St. Joseph County, but by the Goodwill program.
Okay, okay. Goodwill does an outstanding job in that regard. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
On Goodwill, for just one second, I want to echo what Commissioner Hazen, Commissioner Morton said. Some of us got to go on a tour out there earlier this year, and you are absolutely right. It is phenomenal what they're doing. Their facility is across the street from the old Bendix plant.
Yeah.
I would encourage people to make use of Goodwill. And they really are doing a lot for the community.
Okay.
And while we're on that, thank you for putting this together. I know you worked with Commissioner Hazen on this.
Yes.
Appreciate it. I think you've done a great job of pulling this together to get it off the ground.
You're welcome. We're excited about it.
I would just like to second that, too, that I know when you came to me with this idea, everything has to be put together thoroughly and complete, and you did it. This is, this is pretty thorough, pretty complete. Congratulations to your team and you. I did not have anything to do with it, just so you know. They did all the work. I don't want to give any of this credit. But no, I appreciate it, because sometimes we can just say, yeah, we're going to start something, and then we don't do it thoroughly. And this is done thoroughly and completely. And I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I know you did the work. I'm just saying that because, as you know, and people should know that we, the commissioners, have tried to divvy up our workload more between the three of us. And Commissioner Hazen is Human Resources. And so, just want to add that.
Thank you.
With that, gentlemen, do we have a motion on the St. Joseph County internship program?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, IPG, approval of preliminary engineering services agreement with McCormick Engineering for as-needed services.
Good morning. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Offices on the 7th and 11th floor. This is one of the as-needed agreements that, we've had a couple of these over the past few meetings, and this is for McCormick Engineering. And basically, it's if we need someone to do some work rather quickly, or if we, as an emergency, or if it's a smaller project, we can go ahead and do that under these contracts. They'll submit a task order and a cost, and I'll check those and make sure they're appropriate, and then we'll get the work done. This is for a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000, and we recommend your approval.
Sky, we've had several of these
Yes.
over the last month or so. Continuing on with making sure we have a ready-stable to handle some of these things that come up
Yeah, it's
on an as-needed basis.
Yeah, I, I like to have as many of these as possible in case it's ever needed. And it's really an emergency preparedness thing, too. It's having a mechanism already in place to get people on the ground if ever needed. So, yeah, it's a good thing.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the preliminary engineering services agreement with McCormick Engineering?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of LPA 2026 Community Crossing Matching Grant Fund Application, the Financial Commitment Letter.
Yeah, this is the grant that we have gotten from the state every year since it's been being offered. I believe the first was in 2017. And this year, there are some changes to it due to, it was Bill 1461. I don't know what it ended up being turned into, which was a road funding agreement where a lot changed with this grant. One of the main things that really changed was the amount that they are allowing to be given out. Previously, in 2024, it was 300, about 300 to 350 million dollars. They are now capping that at 100 million. So it's going to get a lot more competitive. And it's to a situation now where we really can't rely on that too much as part of our paving budget, whereas before, I knew we were going to get it. We're still going to try, and we're going to try our darndest to get it. And what this letter is, is the Community Crossings Grant application for 2026 is due at the end of this month. And then they'll start being due in July of every year. So 2027 would be in July 2026 and those types of things. But this is due at the end of the month, and we've been out, you know, trying to find roads that weren't in good shape. We're having a hard time doing that.
You got jokes to say.
I'm here all week. No, it's, we all know that our roads are in dire need of some, some work. So we look at our Pacer ratings. We go out and evaluate, you know, the roads themselves. We look at, look at constituent requests, complaints in those areas, and also how much we've been spending out patching certain specific roads. And we choose the, choose everything, well, you're going to see about 10 sections of roads if you look at that, which adds up to about seven to eight miles. Trust me, those are not the only bad roads in the county. These are just some that came to the top. You can probably go out and find a road worse than Shively Road from Dogwood to Cedar. But these are what we picked based on our criteria. And pretty much, it's about, like I said, seven to eight miles. The Community Crossings grant max that we can ask for now is a million, and it's a 50% match. So we'll have to match with a million, whereas the previous two years, it was 1.5 million. So pretty much that means a mi, half a million at least gone from our road funding. But this year, we're looking at, for the Community Crossings grant, doing about 2.1 million dollars worth of work. And what this is, is a request for the board to approve us to get, to apply for this grant, and then also to approve our financial commitment that we'll be making. And I graciously ask for your approval.
A lot of impacts of Senate Bill 1, now SEA 1, that, and then this was right on the heels of it
Yes.
for road funding.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we're, I mean, as you know, we're constantly trying to come up with ways to do more miles with less money. We've got some ideas now on some ways to start attacking the issues in, you know, certain townships in the county. You know, we're trying to find a way that we can do that. And this road funding bill, while it was touted as, as a great, something that was going to be good for everybody, in my opinion, it's not. But that's my opinion. No one asked me, so.
Well, certainly, yeah, certainly we supported it, and the council did, too.
Yes.
It's just one item. That's the small paver.
Yes.
I know I keep bringing that up, but really, that's going to stretch our dollars.
Right.
And the other thing is, going forward, we are going to get some income from Amazon. And those dollars have to be used in or supporting the IEC. We understand that. But that will free up, or be in addition, so dollars that would have to come out of your budget directly could then be used in other areas.
Yes, sir.
Not a panacea. It's not going to solve all our problems.
No.
But we will be doing more
Right.
in the coming years.
And that will help. And the paver, you know, it's going to be one of those things where we're, you know, we're stepping out, stepping out on a limb. And, you know, now, you know, with the, it was approved by the council and the board, and we, we calculated that we could do about 1.7 miles for every one mile that a contractor could do. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna shoot for that, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things where our highway superintendent's nervous. I don't get nervous, but.
No. You guys are going to perform on.
We, we, yeah, one way or another, we will.
Sky.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now you said we are getting 1 million from this grant?
Yes, sir.
So, and our match is 50%?
50%. But we, we end up doing more in the project for, this is the total project cost. So total project cost is 2.1 million. So they'll pay up to a million. We match a million. But we usually do more than
Okay.
than, and we just have to pay for 100%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't adding up, but now, okay.
Yes, sir.
Now I see what you're saying. Okay.
Whereas usually, like last year, this, this package was around 3.3 million dollars.
And that still was not nearly enough?
Oh, oh, no, sir. Yeah. I mean, I looked at the city of South Bend's paving budget this year and, for, I mean, 2026, and they had over, you know, I think it was over 12 million dollars for paving. We have four to five. So, and 1,200 centerline miles rode, so.
Tony, you wanted to add something?
No.
People wonder why I don't sleep at night.
Commissioners, any other questions?
And I just want to add that you guys in the council have been very supportive of infrastructure improvements and trying to help along the way, and I really appreciate that. I mean, the funding issues aren't here, in my opinion, so.
That's not your opinion. That's fact.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not trying to be funny.
No, it is true.
You know, that's.
It, yeah, it's why, it's throughout the state, counties are struggling.
Yeah, but I'll leave it at that.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2026 Community Crossings Matching Grant Fund Application?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Moving on to Item C, approval of change order number one to CNE excavating contract for Smilax Road Lift Station and Force Main Project.
This is a project out in the IEC that is going on, and there were some unforeseen conditions that came about due to permit requirements that Norfolk Southern has placed on the contractor to jack and bore under the railroad. So as part, before they would, you know, they have to do that as part of their permit requirements. And that entails stabilizing the railroad in that area. So there will be a grouting program that they'll put in place to do that. And when you're doing a grouting program like that, it's very extensive, very labor-intensive. And it costs. As you can see here, this change order is for that and some other smaller miscellaneous items, but it's an increase of 1,262,943.70. And like I said, those were unforeseen conditions, because railroads don't require that. This is the first time I've seen it required. But they have their reasons and soil conditions or whatnot. So this is a, out, like I mentioned, out in the IEC towards that project. And most of this, if I recall, will be paid by Amazon versus the county. Is that a correct statement?
Portions of this will be.
Portion, yes. Portions of it, yes.
Thank goodness.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And as you've
Yeah.
As you explained to us, you, they bore in and they fill the voids with this grout, which kind of like cement, to stabilize it as they bore through underneath.
And they put grout ports ever so many feet up top, and they're putting pressure in. We used to do it a lot when I did work on dams and spillways, and it's costly, labor-intensive.
Sky, I don't know. I always have a problem, and will continue to have a problem with these change orders.
Mm-hmm.
But this one, I understand, is different.
Yes, sir.
You know, from perspective of the railroad's demands or whatever. But I don't know. We talked about it, so I just.
Yeah, it's a necessary evil. I mean, I've never been involved with a project that, yeah, maybe one, that didn't have a change order. And it's just, those things come up. Or maybe it's me. I don't know.
No, I, I agree with what was said, you know. Another example of unforeseen, out on Douglas Road, when we were doing that project, there was a pipe that was mismarked on the plans, not nefariously, it just wasn't at the right elevation. And we start
Right.
building, and wait a minute, that pipe should be lower.
But you're right, Commissioner Morton. And I check these when we get them in to make sure that it is a legit ask. Or, you know, it's not just that, it's not just that they spent more time and effort than they thought they were gonna. It's a matter of, I, you know, I take a look at those things. And I, you know, I have a good idea most time, given my experience and what I've worked on. So I, we do look at that. And there's been times where I've sent change orders back, and I, there's no use even going to the board, board for this, so.
That's, that's
We talk it out, yes.
Great. We appreciate it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to imply that any of these contractors are
Right, right.
being nefarious. And that's not what I'm saying. But, you know, I'm glad that you look at those with a fine tooth comb.
You liked that nefarious, didn't you? Gentlemen, any other questions on change order number one? If not, do we have a motion to approve change order number one to CNE excavating contract?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the final item tonight under IPG is approval of professional services agreement with Aben Marsh Consultants for section corner maintenance work and public land survey tasks.
I'll be handling this for, for the surveyor. He was not able to make it tonight. This is an agreement that, basically what this will do is extend in a service that Aben Marsh is currently providing, to go out and help maintain the section corners that the surveyor is required to maintain per Indiana code. It's 60,000 not-to-exceed, or about $450 per section corner is the cost. Basically, what it is, is the surveyor will go out, verify if the monuments there are not. Then they'll verify the state plane coordinates to make sure that it hasn't moved. And then they will also verify the witnesses. A witness, if you don't know, is, that section corner, they measure from the section corner to a permanent object, like a concrete corner or something. They have to have three of those at least. And so they check those, and if there's one missing or gone, they will establish a new one, and then they update the corner info. So that's what's included. They do that for $450 per section corner. And it's on a, and they keep, keep the surveyor in check with the, with the code, which, if I remember, if I looked at the code right, they have to do 5% per year of the corners. And we have about 1,700 section corners, is what I counted earlier. So, surveyors reviewed it, I reviewed it, and find that it is, meets the scope and request your approval.
Any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Aben Marsh Consultants for section corner maintenance work?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sky. Moving on to PSAP 911, approval of the Power DMS subscriptions with NeoGov for caller feedback and training software.
Good evening, everyone. This is Nick Brolwald here from PSAP. Offices at 58266 Downey Avenue in Mishawaka. Tonight, I'm seeking approval to renew the agreement for these two programs. Our center uses them on a daily basis. The first one being Power Engage, which is a program that we use to solicit feedback from our callers. Basically, it's just gauging how well our operator handled their phone call. We rolled this program out in March of this year, and so far, we've had a little over 11,000 reviews received back from our callers, with an overall positivity rating of 94%, which is pretty great. It's sent out 30-some thousand surveys, so we're getting about a 32% participation rate, which is also pretty good. And that's on par with what the company had pitched to us, that these are the numbers that, you know, a lot of other agencies are looking at, too, when it comes to participation. They're not getting sent out on, you know, priority calls, you know, any kind of violent crime. We're not sending a survey, hey, how did we do on this call? These are, you know, more routine, like crash calls, things like that. The other program in this agreement is for Power Ready. This is a software tied into our training program to track the trainees' progress. We create training quizzes, task lists in this program, and our trainers also do their daily observational reports on the trainees within this software. So this is something that we use, like I said, every day, from brand-new trainees to people who, you know, receive promotions, training on new positions. It's used every step of the program.
Given the inflation that we've had in the past several years, even though the cost went up 7%, that doesn't seem, at least to me, to be excessive.
Right. If I remember correctly, I think we might have got a, a little deal last year when we added the Power Engage. We had Power Ready before, and I think that cut us a little deal.
Gotcha.
Sir, what is your reasoning behind excluding certain types of calls?
Just the sensitivity of the call types, essentially. You know, trying to put myself into a caller's shoes. If I had, you know, experienced some sort of a violent crime, I'm not sure how well people would appreciate it if we were reaching out to ask, how well did our, you know, call taker do when he were, you know, reporting your child bit by a dog, or, you know, you witnessed your cousin get shot, or something like that.
So, so it's strictly a sensitivity issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve the Power DMS subscriptions with NeoGov for caller feedback? Caller Feedback and Training Software Program?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye. And also, under PSAP 911, Approval of a Annual Monthly Service Agreement with Arrow Pest Control for Pest Control Services.
Good evening. This is Teresa Cromarty, PSAP Administrative Manager, speaking. Um, we are requesting to, uh, use a new pest control company, um, also used by our maintenance department.
I'm glad you're looking at that. Uh, you were dissatisfied with the service you got from the previous provider and got us a new.
That's correct.
New vendor.
Is this?
Yes, we previously had Orkin.
Is this vendor less expensive?
Uh, it is not. It is a little bit more expensive than Orkin. Uh, however, we were, uh, very displeased with Orkin for a few different reasons. Um, so we're hopeful that Arrow will do a better job controlling some of the issues we're having out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Teresa? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agreement with Arrow Pest Control?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our clerk, Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Charles Wetstone for Probate Court 4D Hearings.
Hello, Commissioners. Amy Rolphas, Clerk of the Circuit Court with an office in the basement of Courthouse I. I have before you a contract for Charles Wetstone to provide, um, oversight and reporting on our Title 4D courtroom over at the JJC, our probate court. Um, in 2023, uh, I worked with Ken Cotter, who is the prosecutor, um, in, in coming up with ways to use the Title 4D fund that is exclusive to the clerk. Uh, it is a very restricted fund, and Title 4D specifically addresses our families in St. Joseph County who are most in conflict and most under-resourced. So the whole idea of having a 4D courtroom is to help these people to get through the court system as quickly as possible and address their needs. So our non-custodial parents are, um, summoned to come to the courtroom, most times to pay their child support if they have not paid their child support. The goal of the cu- the clerk funding that particular courtroom, the Title 4D courtroom, was to get the families through very quickly and then increase the amount of money that the non-custodial parents are paying to the custodial parents, so the children are well taken care of. So this has been going on since 2023 that the clerk has funded that courtroom, and, um, I have a curiosity as to whether or not this, um, this court, this Title 4D courtroom is operating efficiently if, in fact, the, um, payments to the custodial parents have increased as well. So it, uh, Charles Wetstone, uh, is basically a subject matter expert on, uh, probate and the Quest system, which is a software system that is used to track all court hearings and everything else that happens in those courtrooms, and he had been a quality assurance, um, uh, quality, he had been performing quality assurance checks for the probate court for, uh, many years. And I have a very limited knowledge of, uh, the Quest system and how to actually filter through all of the data, and, uh, Charles Wetstone has that. That's an easy ask for him to do. So this contract, uh, specifically addresses the efficiency of the Title 4D courtroom that the clerk is funding in hopes of connecting the dots between an increase in the cases that go through this particular 4D courtroom and the, um, funding, the actual money that gets into the hands of the custodial parents.
Did you state that, uh, the previous administration was utilizing this same type of system as a check and balance? Judge Chikowitz?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't think I understand the question. This is the first time that, that the 4D funds have been used to fund a courtroom.
Okay, okay, I thought you had stated that Judge Chikowitz had came to you.
Oh, yes, yes, correct. Judge Chikowitz, in 2023, when I was first elected, he was, uh, uh, suggesting that that might be a good, efficient use of the Title 4D funds for the community. I'm very concerned about getting the money into the community. It does us no good to have a Title 4D fund where the money is sitting. So he did suggest this, uh, additional courtroom that is funded by the clerk. He has court, or no longer, but th- there are courtrooms over at JJC that do hear all kinds of cases.
Right.
But this case, fu- this courtroom funded by the clerk is strictly for 4D cases.
Right, right. I, I know that. I'm just saying, Chikowitz, the previous administration came to you with this idea, but you're taking it a step further.
Oh, yes.
With this Wetstone.
Mm-hmm.
So they can basically evaluate how well it's working.
Exactly. That is exactly what it is, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was trying to make sure I didn't, didn't misunderstand what you were saying earlier. Okay.
And from the terms of the agreement, you're looking at a four-month.
Yes.
Data gathering.
Exactly.
Analysis by Mr. Wetstone.
Exactly, exactly.
And Judge Zappia will be made aware that this is.
Oh, absolutely. I will give him a phone call tomorrow after, after it's, uh, after you approve it, so.
That's.
And I, and I'm, and, you know, I would anticipate his, uh, welcoming of this to, to get more data, making sure that, again, we're getting more money into the hands of the custodial parents. I think that's everybody's goal. That takes care of our most, most vulnerable families, so, yeah.
I just want to make sure that he knows that this is happening now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to say I appreciate all that you've done to make sure that's happening, because this isn't the only program you started to make sure the custodial parents are getting the money that they need in a fast and efficient way. I appreciate that.
That's correct. I'm also collaborating with the prosecutor's office on a texting program that, that the clerk's 4D money is paying for to text these families to remind them of court dates and to text them to remind them of child support payments that need to be made. So that's another way that I'm collaborating with the prosecutor, so.
Much appreciated, because we have been in the past known as one of the top counties as far as collections.
And we still remain as in the top three.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement with Charles Wetstone for the Probate Court 4D Hearings?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Moving on to IT. Before we start.
Yes, sir.
As much as we like to look at ourselves, the four of us. We gotta fix that so we can see more of the people who are speaking online.
Oh, okay.
Usually we see the, the folks.
Usually we see all the people that are up there.
Yep. We got the thumbnails up top. We only have a few on, uh, the sheriff and Cynthia Heckman and Michael's iPad. Usually we have more, but for some reason, we're not seeing anybody but, uh, the four of us.
Okay.
Just.
I will look into that.
I know you will. I just wanted to say that while I was thinking about it.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, with that hilarity beside it, behind us.
All right.
How about the Flex Licensing with Network Solutions for the Cisco Phone System?
All right. Richard Warfield, offices at 125 South Lafayette, third floor. Um, the approval of the Flex Licensing, it's, um, something we've always had in place. What we have done is switch vendors who, um, the licenses come from, and we switch it over to a yearly, an annual payment instead of a, um, quarterly payment. And the Flex Licensing, that provides the call pathways that, um, when everybody uses the phone, um, that they're able to hear a dial tone and dial out, so, um, that's what the Flex Licensing is for.
Gentlemen, we want our phones working, so. Any questions? Hey, wait a minute. Boy, that was, you're good. I'm referring to the fact that we have our usual.
It's just telepathic, just like.
Oh, gentlemen, any questions on the Flex Licensing with Network Solutions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye. And next, Approval of Change Order Number One, Deliver SIS Contract for Court and Jail AV Project.
Um, yes, I just heard how much, uh, Commissioner Morton liked change orders, so. Um, this is a change order for the, um, hearing impaired system for the courtrooms where, as, um, they didn't realize the age of the equipment until they, um, broke into it and found out how old it was, and, um, that led to having to buy new equipment and programming it to work into the court systems.
So we're talking about the courts and the jails, and they actually broke, broke into the system?
Well, um, the courts and the jail, the jail.
I'm kidding, Richard.
But the jail is part of the overall, um, project that we have been doing with the court, so this is, uh, it was labeled as the Court and Jails product, project, so.
And we have money allocated, so we can move ahead with this.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have Approval of Change Order Number One?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. And. Probate JJC, Approval of Grant Application Request for the 2026 GAL CASA Program. Guardian Ed Lightem.
Um, good evening. I'm Kristen Cooper, the Controller for the St. Joseph County Probate Court loaded, located at 1,000 South Michigan Street, and this is Stephanie Shoemaker. Uh, she is our newest Executive Director of the CASA program, and we are here tonight to request permission to apply for the 2026, uh, GAL CASA Grant, which is a matching grant. Um, the application is pretty much the same as it was last year, um, but we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Kristen said, "pretty much." Is there something significant? I didn't.
I'm, I'm assuming it's all the same.
Yes. Um, I don't believe that we applied for the capacity building grant last year, um, but we are, we did apply or would like to apply for it this year, and that's just asking for an additional staff member.
Well, now I see why it says Part II Optional, um, last year, and we're.
Is that?
Moving ahead this year.
I'm sorry, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So is that based upon increase of the need of, of CASA volunteers, or?
We're lacking the number of volunteers, so we're still working on building the volunteer pool up. Um, so we have designed a staff advocate position. We did, um, our former director, Brenda, did this many years ago. Um, she built the staff advocate position, so they can serve up to 50 children on, um, our waitlist, and so then it helps to reduce our waitlist. So right now, we have about 100 children on our waitlist. Um, we just hired a person who started yesterday, so we expect them to take about 50 children off of the waitlist, and then if we had an additional staff member with this capacity building grant, then they.
That's, okay, that's what I'm saying. Right, okay. That's exactly what I'm saying. You got some big shoes to fill there.
Oh, I know.
Not, not to put any pressure on you, but.
I already feel it.
She, she did a outstanding job for many years.
Yes, and we miss her.
What's the total ask? What are we asking for?
Um, for the matching grant is 1, um, 156,000 dollars for 400, I'm sorry, let me start over. 100,000. 100,000. 156,476 dollars.
Okay.
So sorry.
No, you're fine. And then we'll have to match half of that? Is that what this?
Um, there is the matching, but the county does go above and beyond. The county, um, gives us 11 staff members.
Okay.
Already, so it's above and beyond what, um, the match would be.
Take that into consideration.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the Grant Application Request for 2026 for the GAL CASA Program?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And finally, from our recorder, another Laredo Agreement, this time for Young's Title Enterprise doing business as Young's Title and Abstract. Do we have a motion to approve the Laredo Agreement?
Motion to approve, second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye. Moving on, anybody in the room wish to offer a comment? I don't see anyone. Three people online. Does anyone wish to offer a comment? Easy night. Want to thank everyone. Whoa, I'm sorry. You want to offer a comment?
I would, um, be extremely remiss if I didn't, uh, again, thank Mr. Murphy and Mrs. Doyle for their outstanding, uh, job during this budget process, and I, I really mean that. I've been involved in a few of these, to say the least, but you guys just did a great job, along with the council and along with my two esteemed colleagues, but what the Order's Office brought this year was, was in my mind, and there again, I've got a little experience with, with budgets. You guys did it, knocked it out the park. So thank you.
Echo that, and let's include Steve Dalton, too.
I was just gonna say that, and Mr. Dalton.
It was, it was a team effort.
Yes, thank you very much.
Great job.
Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Second.
I could have seconded for change.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes?
Oh.
Commissioner Backsberry?
Aye. Thank you.
I can't get a mouth to stand another half hour.